Meeting to order. I need approval for the minutes of 5:12024.
Motion, second.
Any other changes, deletions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now I gotta go do some work here, so you guys can come down for a few minutes. This is a fun part of the job.
Yes.
Gentlemen. For folks, oh by the way, we have a new member here. And your name is?
Beth.
Beth, she's from Pittsfield. Not to be confused with Pittsburgh.
Yeah, it happens all the time.
Welcome.
Even in the phone book.
Welcome to our little home meeting here. So, we're here to honor a couple of... What do you wanna call them?
Seasoned veterans.
See, that's, they're very good, I like that. Seasoned veterans for all the work they have done here for Tim, who's done it for sixteen years. So we're gonna give them a plaque for their service to the district. And believe me, for serving a public entity like this for this amount of years is a big deal, as far as I'm concerned. So, I'm presenting Tim Gilbert from Castleton. An appreciation to your sixteen years of dedication of service, devotion, and commitment to the solid waste district for 2008 to 2024 by the Board of Supervisors, June 5th, '24.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I enjoyed my time with the board. Certainly challenging sometimes, but a good, good group of people. And I think that our mission is well worth the efforts, and I appreciate it, thank you.
And I respect your opinion for sure, because you are always, always very good with the numbers, always very on, on it when we needed it.
Yeah, I had some opinion.
Yeah, that's okay. Next, we have the former Chair, which is a big deal. Now that I begin to understand that myself. Larry Taggart from IRA. He's been with us for thirty-one years. And Chair of how many years?
I have no idea.
You have no ideas, okay. So, this is present to Larry Taggart. An appreciation for your thirty-one years of dedication, service, devotion, and commitment to the solid waste district, nineteen ninety-three to two thousand twenty-four, on this day by the Board of Supervisors.
I appreciate it. This district has came a long ways over years.
Yes, you have brought, you've steered the ship in the right direction.
No, it's the board. And this, these members will bring it to even a new one.
But I think we need to honor you, because you actually steer part of that ship, and you spent many, many nights between meetings with Mark and the Executive Committee to do additional meetings, and beyond the one meeting a month. So you have actually earned that award, my good man.
I appreciate it very much, thank you.
Thank you. You can stay if you want.
We'll get our chairs out here, we'll go get them.
You know, we have at the end of our meetings, and we have it at mine homes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. For the new members, that's a lot of history walking out the door here, so. All right, so we're back to the agenda. We're now on item four. Mark? We got everybody except for one. Which is very good, by the way.
Yep, we're doing good.
We're doing good.
Just one more to go, and I'm gonna get that really soon.
Okay, item five, outreach, transfer station updates.
We have Desneka here.
There's her, there she is right on the camera. Welcome.
So, been doing regular business inspections, then last, in May, we had the Green Up Day, which was surprisingly successful, even though it was actually given to us to do literally the last minute, and we still managed to do an okay job with that. So I'm pleased with the Green Up Day and have a lot of notes to help it be better next year. And then we had the Loyalty Parade, which was, which probably shouldn't have been canceled due to rain, and it went anyways, and soaked skin, but hey, the truck looked nice.
That's a good.
And we represented well in that rainy parade. Not that anyone saw it, because it was pretty empty. Unfortunately.
They saw it on TV, so you're good. Peg TV was there, so a lot of people saw it live on TV, so.
Oh, good. So anyways, we've got the Energy Fair in Mount Mahaly coming up. There we'll be with a lot of compost information and horse recycling information. So looking forward to that. And we also have two more parades, the Polley Parade on July 4th, and the Brandon Independence Day Parade on the 6th. So we'll be at both of those.
Is that the end of your report?
I guess it is.
Okay, all right, thank you, Bill. So I'm gonna give you a little comment here. On the Board of Almen, they put in committee the special events permits. They have added a line to the permits, and we're gonna need some help from you, and we're gonna invite you to a committee meeting. So people would have a solid waste plan when they do these events. Right now, we don't, there's no obligation to do that, so now we're putting the emphasis back on the folks who do the events, to make sure we have the proper refuge there to do solid waste and recycling and whatever else we have to do. So we're gonna need your two cents in there, so you'll be invited to a committee meeting to help us with that. So when the vendors do come, like the farmers' markets and the other downtown events, we will have the proper waste materials that we need to have there, so. Thank you so much. Okay, Mark, we're now on item six, monthly financials. That is on page, starts on page?
Six.
Six.
Greg talked about this first.
All right, well, my part begins on page ten, then.
Page ten.
So we have the income statement for the general fund, starting on page ten. Total revenues are $737,000. Total expenses are about $779,000. Which, as you'll note in the next line, the excess revenue over expenditure is actually inverse now, where we're actually $41,847 of expenses in excess of income. Basically, this is the first time we've done that this year, because we started expensing the capital project, capital reserves, on a monthly basis. We hadn't been expensing those so far. But we put in four months' worth of the 2024 budgeted capital plan, so. When we consider that in the income statement, it puts us, as I said, about $41,847,000 in expenses in excess of revenue. The next page, page twelve, is the balance sheet for the general fund. Total assets of 1.2 million. Total liabilities of 718,000. Total capital of 493,000. And obviously liabilities and capital together are the same 1.2 million as the assets. The next page, we have the income statement for the MRF. Total revenue is $25,526. Total expenses of $26,041. And that puts us with expenses in excess of revenue by about $515. The next page, page fifteen, is the balance sheet for the MRF. Total assets of 1.27 million. And liabilities bearin' under, it's all basically, it's all capital, 1.27 million as well, so. Those are the financial statements for the general fund and the MRF. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to go over any of it with you.
For the folks at home, these are for the first four months. We are on a calendar year with the district, and these are closing numbers from April 30th. So we only have the first four months in here. So basically, what he was giving you was year-to-date.
Yeah, year-to-date through April 30th.
Right, just so everybody knows at home, and all of us here.
Page seventeen, we have, this month, we kind of expanded the hauler accounts receivable chart that we've been including. There have been requests that we basically add in all of the licensed haulers within the district. We have been reporting basically everybody that we had records for, so. And the reason people would have been left out is because we do not do business within the district, or they go through our transfer station at Leeson Road, so we have their records through that. Nothing really stands out. We've got the typical problem child, a little bit of, one of the haulers only about $18,950, another one was about $7,600. Those two have been a known issue for quite some time, so. The others that are known, everybody's basically up to date with their reporting, it's just a timing difference, they haven't figured that out. But I don't expect any issues collecting any ones that you know of. So yeah, that's about all I've got.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, David.
So, we added some kind of a capital charge into our finances, and that created a forty-something-thousand-dollar deficit. So what's the plan that remedies that?
Well, basically, you know, we're not performing in line with the budget as it was expected and approved, so we're, you know, lagging behind where we should be. So if we wanna maintain that, you know, capital improvement plan as had been approved, you know, we've gotta make up for it somewhere. Basically, we're, you know, we're getting hit with more, you know, disposal and hauling fees, things like that. So, you know, it basically comes down to if we wanna maintain what we've done for years in building up this capital plan, so that we can pay for these projects. You know, it comes down to, you know, we need to generate more revenue to keep up with the expenses, because, you know, the, the, you know, expenses are going up pretty steadily, even though inflation's supposedly starting to calm down a bit. It's kind of a lagging indicator, and we're still seeing expenses go up.
So, does the capital plan, like you said, the stormwater issue that's creating?
Yeah, that's one of them, there's, there's a handful.
What's the other ones?
I can point you to where, look, here.
This is gonna be talked about in the next bullet on the agenda?
Oh, it's on the agenda, yep.
Yeah.
On page thirteen.
It'll be in the manager's report.
You'll notice there's line items accrued, CIP, that's accrued capital, capital improvement plan. That breaks out in like scale hours, the recycling and HHW facility, diversion grants, new containers, new loader, asphalt and stone. There's the stormwater plan, basically, there's, these are all those capital improvement projects that we've been trying to save money for and budget for, and basically setting aside funding out of our capital to be sure we can do those projects.
And so we don't, we haven't set aside enough?
Well, no.
The issue?
We hadn't been expensing it so far this year, just because, you know, we weren't really getting to that point yet. So we expensed four months' worth of the expenses associated with the capital improvement plan for this year, so basically four months' worth of what was approved. And that's what ended up kicking us into the red, basically. If you take that out of there, we were still, you know, about $40,000 in the other direction with, you know, with income exceeding expenses, but when you add that in, it, you know.
So we need a plan, then, to start to cover this, right?
If we wanna keep going with the capital improvement plans, like we have been, you know, it's been something that's been building for years and years, that we've been setting aside these funds to do. You know, the money's there to do it, but it's not gonna take long before that kind of gets shipped away if we don't do something about it, and look at the revenue side to kinda.
Mark's gonna answer your question in our manager's report. That's gonna come up, some plan on what we're gonna do. Also, the reason why we had a capital plan, which we didn't have, I don't know, six years ago, we didn't have one, we were going by the seat of our pants, and we're always bonding. Bonding's expensive. So what we do is save on our own, put the money aside, it saves us bond prices, counsel, and everything else. So this is actually a good way of building up the fund to do the projects that need to be needed here, so. Caller number one, who are you?
See Clinton's back there.
Caller number one?
Yeah.
Who's that? Is that still Mark?
Yeah, I finally logged on on my laptop.
Oh, okay.
Because you're on twice.
Are you on the phone?
I'm gonna hang up the phone.
Okay, okay, gotcha, because you're feedback, there you go. Thank you, Mark. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if we missed Brianna for her?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then I can get into?
Oh, you're part of the outreach and transfer, I'm sorry, sorry Brianna, I'm very sorry. Let's go back to Brianna to do her transfer station report.
Um, I don't know if anyone got my, um...
Here, we got it right here.
I was just gonna hand it out, but, um, there's some graphs and stuff that I might want to take a look at.
You got one?
I'm good.
Okay.
The first update is related to the road repairs that I would like to see happen at the transfer station. I'm having some issues having these, some of the companies get back to me, but I have reached out to some more local companies, hoping that they can give me some estimates here soon. So I'm hoping that I can, then the next, by the time the next meeting comes around, I can have some concrete numbers. I know more companies are picking up with their projects and stuff right now, so they're kind of busy, but, um, also recently, we've kind of expanded our HHW collections at the transfer station, so we're now allowing customers to come to the recycling center and bring a few items. We're trying to limit it, the quantities as much as possible, because we don't want them to overload the recycling center attendants, but, you know, if they have batteries, aerosol cans, fluorescent bulbs, and CFLs, the attendants can take them there. And I've been working with the attendants at the recycling center to make sure they know how to properly handle these items, because there are labeling and storage requirements that we have to follow.
So this is, this is a customer service process?
Yeah.
Which, I'm very happy to hear. So people bringing trash up, will bring their little stuff with them, their batteries or whatever. It's a one-stop-shop type thing?
Yeah.
So that's getting us to where we really wanna go someday, so, beautiful. And how are we getting them from the, from the top to the hazardous waste building?
Yep, so the guys are kind of having like a secondary containment system, where they're, they're putting it in the labeled boxes like they're supposed to do, and then the hazardous waste coordinator comes by.
Oh, okay.
Once the day is over, and he'll collect everything and bring it to the hazardous waste center.
So the gentleman down below comes up and gets it?
Yep.
Okay, beautiful, yep, sounds like a plan.
And then I included some data, it's a little bit small, but just some general overview of some of the Rover data. It shows how much material we've collected over the towns we've visited so far, which we're gonna be going to all of these towns one more time, so a lot of these numbers are gonna increase. And then also the number of participants that we had over across each town. So I just thought it was some interesting information for everyone. And then I also included some images of some new signs that we're gonna be putting up at the recycling center. These are kind of just meant to educate our customers better. We're gonna be bringing the recycling glassing program, so I wanted to make sure the customers could understand what there's, what's supposed to go where, and a couple of new signs that just are supposed to give the customers a general education on what's recyclable and what's not recyclable, so, that's that.
I'm glad you're addressing that, because we had a major event that was involved in, and I'm not gonna put them under the wire, because I'm pretty upset how it worked, but the consumer does not understand when they're bringing their trash to a receptacle in a major event. See, these are cans and bottles, these are blue, recycling, and then this is trash. Well, that didn't quite work, because people were just... So I like your little color-coded here, maybe that's one thing we can do, it's on the docket for next year, that we're gonna work on that?
Yeah.
And get people in there to help consumers behave and handle the product properly?
Right.
And dispose it, because it's gonna save us a lot of time on the end, because most of all the trash bags went in the sorting, all-sort unit, so they didn't know, so we will educate our members to make sure trash is in the trash unit and all-sort, where all the bottles and cans and all that goes into, because Casella comes and takes that away. But now Casella's gonna have to go through all that, and it's gonna cost some money for the arena to sort that out, so.
Brianna, excellent job. And to the point where we wanna have a commodity that can go to market, if it's gonna be what it is, we're hoping to get some kind of value on that.
Sure.
And if it's not that, it's contaminated, all that value is gone, and it changes into trash.
That's correct. As soon as the shrimp bones got in, or shrimp peelings got in there, that really screwed everything up.
You want to keep the prices low, keep it organized, know what we can expend, know what we're receiving. It's, it's very important that you stay with us.
So I just noticed that we're gonna need to do some more education, because obviously the consumer, even in a party situation, does not understand.
Right.
Which is funny. Okay, thank you.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
You have a book program to take back recycling books.
Yeah.
Well, we had a company come into town and drop off a book bin.
Book bin, yeah.
And dropped it out. I guess they've gone out of business now, the way I understand.
Yeah.
So, and you've got somebody that's looking to take that over, I heard?
Yeah, there's a new outfit that took over for them, and they're basically assuming all the new, all those book boxes, and they're gonna be picking up instead of the other.
Because ours is full right now, so I was just curious.
Yeah, um...
You know, if you'd heard it, how soon they'll be starting this?
Yeah, they've already picked up from us once, so I can give you a contact on who.
Okay, that would be good, I would agree with that. Or just tell them, go to West Rottlin at the library.
Yeah, I can do that.
And they can back right up, and it's right there, I mean, it's easy to load and everything for them, it's the West Rottlin Library, and...
Yeah, I can get in touch with them and let them know.
Let them know, okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
That Brianna, is that it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, okay. Next is the, number seven, or you want, or is that all in one?
Number seven is a separate item that would probably need some action.
Okay.
And it talks about what Greg was talking about, our situation, and the review of the rate adjustment, which is something that we, in our budget plan, talked about doing it again at this time, to maybe start something July 1st, if how things are trending. But currently, our surcharge is $21.47 a ton. And if you take a look at some of the paperwork in your packet, or...
I think I saw that.
I have that right on the first page, which talk, it would show, you'll see it.
That's the comparison with the other district rates spreadsheet?
No, that's the last one. The first one is gonna be something like this.
Oh, yeah.
Remember that first one?
Yeah, let me see it, here's somewhere, I got my...
And it talks about, it gives the dates where these changes occur. If you see it in the new packets on page seventeen, or it's in a separate packet in your folder, those at home don't have it, but I'm gonna be bouncing it to you, okay?
Yep, seventeen.
And what this shows, most recently, last year, in 2014, we had, 2002, one, we were supposed to increase our fees because of our costs were going up. And you can see way over on the right-hand side, the highlighted contribution of 6%. Their charges were going up to, you see the numbers there for the hauling and the tip fee, and so with knowing that, we, in our budget plan, I asked for a certain increase in the surcharge, and it didn't happen. And let me, let me kind of buzz through that a little bit here. I asked for an increase of $1.53, or $23, to offset these costs that we were getting from our haul fees and tip fees and other associated fees that were going up. I think when we, when we did the budget, we did do a balanced budget, and we had an expense line that was approved for the budget, and, but however, there was an after-motion indicating that the board did not wanna increase the surcharge unless the board specifically indicated that. So when the budget, on the revenue side, it had the calculation of an increase of the surcharge, but that was, the revenue side of the budget was, was damaged. It wasn't a balanced budget when that happened. And here we are in July. If that wasn't working in the beginning of the year, I suggested, and I don't normally do this, that we review this halfway through the year to see how we're trending, so we do keep our capital program going, because I'm told that it's a, it's a board's priority. So, I've taken a look at eight years of where we stand here, the end of April, and we looked at our revenues over expenses, because everything's about revenue over expenses. If we don't have enough revenue to pay the bills, it's, it's not a good thing. And if you go onto this page here?
Page nineteen.
Yep, right here. You'll see, we've never been like this. We never had, except for one minor thing in, during COVID, but we've quickly caught up on that. But throughout the years, we've never had a deficit at this rate, rating. So it does raise a flag in my eye, and I just wanna alert you to this threat.
Now, if we raise that up to the $23 you're asking?
That's what I asked for in, in the budget season in December.
But now, if we decide to do it today, raise it up to that, that will, basically, we won't be taking this $41,847 out again, right?
That's, that's all I...
I mean, that's out already, but if we continue this way, we'll end up with this amount at the end of the year, too.
Well, we're gonna, we're not gonna have anything in the capital, that's gonna come into the capital, and you're draining your capital funds.
Oh, oh, okay, I see.
So if we don't have enough money, we're not gonna be able to get the scale, or...
Took this from the capital money to balance this out.
Right.
That's how it has to happen, yeah.
Okay, so then we gotta put it back in order to?
And so that...
Okay, okay, yep.
Eventually leading to, as you can guess, that we make an increase in the surcharge.
Right.
Is an idea.
Right.
If you go on to... Here's our budget here that you see before you. And you could see that there's a price of the surcharge.
Yep.
That is, was indicated in the revenue section, but it's not funded, because we weren't able to get that extra cost due to the motion of, do not increase the surcharge unless the board specifically makes that motion.
Right.
Okay.
And over here, we have a capital project plan of $270,000. So what you see in our line there was 270 divided by 12.
Twelve.
Times four, April. And these are all the capital projects that Dave was talking about, that we have planned over here, see over here, 2004?
Yep.
These are all the expenses. And then one of these expenses, we're expecting another $100,000 to go into this, this, this stormwater project, that's gonna be starting in a week, and it's gonna be over in the middle of July, so. So we had to pay him before that, when it's over. So we're gonna be pulling from other things that we put in from, um, other projects to pay the stormwater project perhaps.
The capital fund right now has enough to cover that.
Yeah, no.
We've already put enough aside for that.
Yes.
Right. We're already, we're, we're already expensing these capital projects, basically taking the $270,000 for the year, dividing it by 12 months and expensing one month at a time. So we're at four months of, of expense so far. And that way, when we do have actual cash dispersments to the companies that are gonna be doing the work, it won't be an additional expense. It's not gonna come out of the expense. It's gonna come out of these reserve funds that we've set aside.
Correct.
So, you know, if we have a $25,000 bill for the stormwater that we need to pay, um, you know, it'll be a $25,000 cash expenditure, but it's already been expensed. So it would just come out of that line item on the capital improvement.
We've already put it aside, so now you're gonna start drawing it down from that fund.
Precisely.
So it's not touching the budget, except what we're putting in per month.
For budget and purposes.
Right.
So we, we don't end up saying, oh gee, we didn't, then we lose it.
Right.
No surprises.
Yep.
So this is the, all the capital that we're looking into. And, you know, I put another thing in here to show what other districts are paying for this surcharge, to show that we are, in any essence, of all the districts that have.
Page twenty-six.
Yep. We, we are the lowest. Last year, every district went up at least, at least a dollar.
What's killing us is transportation and handling.
External, external prices. I'm trying to get this over for the guys at home here.
What's the current balance of the capital fund as of April 30th?
I'd have to add up all four of those line.
When you look at the balance sheet.
It's on the balance.
It's in the budget, with the budget.
What page is that?
Pages.
Page fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yep.
No, that's the Murph, sorry.
Yeah, it's.
Page twelve and thirteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
That's where the, all the balances are.
I see.
Probably the easiest way to do it is just take all the long-term liabilities and subtract out the Gleason Road line item and that would give us the total capital reserves at this point. So six, three, one, five, two, five, eight, two, plus fourteen, seven, thirty, seven, five, two, five.
You're talking about the 14,000 Gleason Road?
Yeah.
From?
Um, that's, that's the prepaid lease agreement with Casella.
Right.
Um, so that, that's not part of the capital projects. Um, now shoot, I just hit something wrong. Six, three, one, five, two, five, eight, two, plus fourteen, seven, thirty, seven, five, two, five. So all of the capital projects right now combined, we're at 616,000, $788 and 47 cents.
That's considered cash, it's set aside, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Basically what we've expensed for all those projects combined so far.
And we've been building up, we've been pulling it out of our budget every year to keep building it up.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. All right, Mark, next.
Um, so with that said.
I've got a question, I'm sorry, David.
Well, I, so what is the fix to our, our, our problem, our deficit problem? Is it to put into effect the price increase that you suggested earlier that we apparently didn't?
Yes, yes.
And so do we need a motion to do that?
Yeah, we do. Um, I'm, I'm gonna come up with a number and I'm gonna tell you why I picked this number. And there could be other things. The bottom line, big picture is we need to have more revenue than expenses. And right now, we're not having that and we're not trending that way as I forecasted in my original budget forecast. Back then, I asked for $2.50 to, um, have a balanced budget, revenues match expenses. Right now, if you take a look at where we are in percentages of four months, in four months in the budget, we're right about the 33%. So we're on track for expenses, but the revenue's not coming in. So in my original budget forecast, I suggested $2.50. Me being conservative, I'm thinking one dollar is a realistic number to increase it by. And if it doesn't improve before, anything before September, I'd ask that we kind of put another review time in September to see how we're going, instead of going to $2.50 at one increment. I think that could be a little bit, um, more appetizing, but also keep us with the revenues above expenses.
We haven't raised it up since, um, January of 2023.
A lot of prices have increased much more.
Well, we're doing good is just the Casella fees are, not trying to blame Casella, I'm just saying the costs are jumping because their costs are jumping, so.
Dramatically.
So you, do you need a motion or how do you wanna handle that?
Yeah, you, you're suggesting a dollar.
A dollar with the option to open this again in September.
September.
Yep.
Okay, now I can entertain a motion.
So I would move that we increase the fees by one dollar with the expectation that we'll look again at this in September, uh.
Effective July 1st?
You wanna do it in July?
Effective July 1st.
By first.
In September, but effective going backwards to July, right?
June, this next month, next month is July 1st. So we'll increment, we'll have this chart, we, what I'd like to do is, not to interrupt your motion, it's, it's good, but to give the haulers a heads up.
Boy, you're gonna give them 30, well, it's less than 30 days now, but.
Yeah.
Gotta give them some time.
Yeah.
So help me framing the last part of that motion.
So, um, your motion is to raise the fee, uh, to 2247, which is a dollar.
Yeah.
Um, July 1st, effective July 1st, with a review and address the fee if it's working or not working, or we adjust it again in September 1st, our first September meeting.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more debate on this? Anybody on the camera or on the? Anybody have any questions on the Zoom meeting?
So just to be clear, the motion is to raise the fee $1 to 2247 and review it again in September?
That's correct. As of July 1st, the fee would go into effect July 1st.
As of July 1st, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, question. So with the review, does that mean that you are gonna consider raising it again?
I'm gonna look at the numbers like I'm doing, we're doing tonight. And if I see it's getting worse or not getting better, I'll bring it to your attention because it's a risk and you wanna know your risk. And then we can have that conversation again.
With the expectation that you would raise it how quickly you get?
It's, it's up to the board.
As a consumer, I would be a little put off if you only, if you raised it a dollar and then four months later raised it a dollar again. Like I'd rather get hit with that initial higher raise and just call it a wash and not raise it again a couple months later. I think that people would be offended by that. Personally, that's my thought. I would be.
Yeah.
Why not just raise it to the $2 right out of the gate?
Um, from our last meeting debate.
Yeah, I can say, yeah.
Um, I'm trying not to get beaten up. And.
Yeah.
I've always been, I, I consider myself being pragmatic.
Yeah.
And instead of just going for it all, all the time, let's evaluate each and every time that you can look at it. And if it's not warranted, I'm, we're overcharging a dollar extra.
It's, but it is warranted, you have a deficit.
Yes. Yes.
But the dollar may.
May fix it.
May fix the problem. And we won't know till we've practiced a little bit of what the dollar will do.
There's, there's other things that are happening too with our ordinances that is, I think we're losing money there and, um, but that's another subject.
That answer my question, thank you.
We will, we will talk about that in executive session under legal. Um, we'll give a report of where we are on, on that.
Yeah, it answered my question. Just curious.
I get you.
We had the discussion during the budget process and we were, the $2 was on the table.
Two fifty.
Two fifty.
Two fifty was on the table.
And the board, it was unanimous, I think, unanimous, whoa, 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 wait, 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 wait. And they see all this money in the capital fund, they see all this activity going on. But now we've gone four months, we're seeing not going the direction we thought was gonna go in. So I think this is proven now to just put something in there to see if we can stop the hammer.
The money had been sitting there for a while, we hadn't touched it at all. Then now all of a sudden, we're starting to draw it out. Now we're seeing what's, what the effect is of it. Before it was just sitting there and piling it up and where each year we added a little bit to it, to it, to get to where we are. But now we're starting to go the other way. We're starting to draw out of that fund. Now we're seeing what's happening.
It's taking a long time.
This is a pretty common issue now in, in any industry, any business, that revenues are the same they were in 2023, but it expenses are up double due yet.
Yep.
And it needs to be reviewed every quarter. You know, 90 days is about as long as you can go without reviewing this and making whatever the necessary customer is with, with, you know, making sure that your revenue matches your expenses without tipping your customer.
Yep.
Any other debate? So all in favor, say aye.
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 Raise your hands on the TV or, or put up.
Micro on session.
If I don't hear any no's, then I'm assuming that everything's okay on the Zoom meeting. Yep, okay, there we go. All right. So that's a unanimous vote. Okay, next, Mark.
And it's my, my manager's report?
Yes, sir.
Um, item number one, Greg already went into the expanded accounts receivable and he talked about those, a lot of the unknowns and that's, we're also dealing with that also.
You're on page 27, correct?
Yep, that's correct. Number twos is I've been reporting for the last six months. Um, we have, um, a couple of haulers that have been referred to the attorney, we're still waiting for some action. We've been looking to re-qualify our ordinances for two years, two, over two years. Um, and we're waiting for that to happen. And there's a couple of leases that are expiring. We have disposal lease and we have the lease agreements for, with Casella. One's already expired a long time ago and there's another one that's about to expire at the end of this year. So we're still waiting for council to work on that.
Do, do our council have?
They have.
Or their proposal?
They do with my suggestions.
Okay.
Um, I haven't heard from them on that.
Okay, we will, we will deal with that in executive session.
Um, number five is the, the idea that it's kind of goes dovetails on our capital plan to build infrastructure up at the transportation, a new facility for recycling in HHW, one facility that has, and also incorporate running water and sewer up there. But this is contingent upon having a long-term lease with the city. The lease has been sent, UCC'd on it and hopefully we're gonna get an appointment with a mayor, with a mayor and.
We hope the city attorney gets on it.
I do too. So that's, that's, um, so that addresses the first part of it. The audit, um, having it's gonna be done in May, I'm hoping soon. Um, after we find out what our numbers are for audit year 2022, I have a request for proposal going out to see if we can get another auditor because they're not gonna be doing audit services any longer and, um, we'll start doing 2023 as soon as we can. Stormwater project, there's a whole project timeline that I received from the vendor and they're gonna be starting to get away from the facilities to come in. Um, and they're gonna be drop shipping those things off within a week or so and then they're gonna start going and it's gonna be done maybe mid-July if everything goes good.
And we've already had a site review on how, and working with Casella, so it doesn't close down to the operation, so they're gonna work around that and doing some Saturday work.
Yes.
And some Sunday work, so it doesn't shut down the, the plant behind us. And they have been very, according to the meeting that Mark and I were at, the people at Casella were very, very open and willing to help to get this situation taken care of. So they're doing everything they can, moving vehicles around, setting up staging areas for the, um, equipment to come in. So there's a good, what I witnessed was a good relationship going on between the contractor, Casella, and the solid waste district, so.
And, um, we have a legislative report. I can go into this, um, well, geez. Well, the big thing out of this, this legislative report, this is related to solid waste. It talks about batteries, it talks about leach aid, the stuff that comes out of landfills or any kind of, um, transfers behaviors. It talks about tires, it talks about PFAS. The first thing is right on the top there is Senate number 254. We, we got that bill passed, which is expands the HHW bill that was passed last year, which, um, I believe several of you wrote to legislators asking for support. Overwhelmingly, we got a good bill last year and again, we got this one this year. So it's gonna expand to those batteries that are in devices like laptops and cell phones and it's gonna offset the cost that we would normally absorb. So more money being pulled in from the, um, producers, the brand, the brands, yeah.
Can the governor sign this yet?
Monday.
Okay.
Yes, he signed it Monday.
Now it's statute.
Yes, sir. Um, there's another thing here that I have this little poster here and this is this kind of dovetails what Brianna was talking about and we put this out on all our social media channels, on the website. Hey, you know, if you're coming up to recycle your paper, plastic or, um, compost and e-waste, there it is too. So it's out there, it's been out there for over a week. We've been doing this for about two months, I think, easing this in to see how we can get our staff up to date and is without errors or issues. But if you have one of those bulbs that break, that becomes hazardous waste. And those are one of those things that we found in a, when I found, when I started here, $8,000 for a broken bulb in a, in a container left unattended to. So we're very cognizant of following regulations and safety.
Here's my issue here.
Yep.
And I'm speaking for the city of Rotten, I'm not speaking for the solid waste district. We have a lot of renters in the city, um, who have, how can I pleasantly put this on the table? Behavior issues dealing with solid waste. Um, and hopefully we need to get something in ordinances so landlords and the consumer of those rental properties are handling this product properly and it's not happening. It's not happening right now, it's all going in one trash barrel. People don't care or it goes on the lawn or it goes in the street on the curb.
I was gonna say curb.
So, um, I don't know how to solve that problem, but we need to get ahead of it because it's gonna get worse as the dollar gets tighter and people don't have a place to live, and so on and so on and so on. When I was doing the green update, the rotary, the, the river on the bike path and I was amazed to see a lot of bulbs and cans, um, with, um, oil petroleum products in them, batteries, shopping carts in the river and bicycles in the river, um, and you couldn't see it from the bike path, you had to actually, you know, go into the bank area and it was covered with stuff. And people are, that's what they're using for their landfill right now.
Yep.
And I'm pretty sure it's happening in the other towns. I mean, La Fracha Drive is probably a, a point where they're hitting that too.
We have it in the marsh.
Right.
All the time in West Rottlin, the marsh all the time. I keep the town boys go every day, once a day down through to pick up anything just because it seems to grow. Once you see one thing, next thing, there's two things, next thing. So we try to get after them every day to clean them.
I don't know how to solve that behavior issue. It is a behavior issue. It's, it's people, lack of. It is a behavior issue, it's, it's people lack of community spirit, or whatever you wanna call it.
Or bad behavior, period?
Yeah, yeah. And, and too many landlords from out of town. Who are not realizing what's happening to their properties. So this is, this is becoming a big problem in Rutland City, and that's why on the ordinance side, we're, we're putting in the permits for all the special events, that they have to have a solid waste plan, part of their event permit. So we can start, you know, turning that curb. Because right now, they just keep the stuff on the streets. When they do an event in downtown, the stuff's sitting there blowing around. So this way, we, we can kinda control this. I'm not saying we're trying to make money here with the district, but, you know, it's costing us more money to put in the landfill. So we can sort, take this product out of the mainstream. That's what the whole point of all this, is to take the product off, out of the mainstream and reusing it. And apparently, the consumer, I know a lot of consumers are there, but not enough consumers are there.
This, this, it is, it is a challenge, and, you know, you go back, way back in, um, Act one forty-eight, where they prohibited a lot of things from going into, with the trash. You know, after all these years, we're starting to see some progress in the latest report. They've done some sampling reports this year through a private consultant. So we are seeing some progress. Is it, is it perfect? No. Every, every town, the state, you know, I was just on a meeting today where they talked about it. And it's, it's, how do you get the landlords to do this? It's, it's, um, it's a whole chain of people. You know, the one that turns on the faucet, they just expect the water to come on, the light switch to come on. But there's a whole bunch of infrastructure that we have to do some outreach to say, hey, this is important that we follow these little simple steps, just as you said. Yep.
So I have a quick question. The Act one forty-one or Act one forty-eight requires the streams to be separated. Does it make any requirement of landlords that they have to provide separate receptacles? Or is there any, like, enforcement regarding that?
Is, it's, it's-
It's up to each town. We, we got it in our ordinance, um, that they have to do that.
So is it Rutland City ordinance?
It's in our ordinance here. But each town also has ordinances, and some towns don't have any ordinance on this. You know what I'm saying? So, um-
If they provided, they require you to provide a separate recycling as, as opposed to trash?
Is that in the statute, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
So now, they're supposed to take these CFL bulbs.
Set them aside.
I've, I've been to the-
Yeah.
To be, you know, here, take this, we don't take them. They just go in the trash. So that's where a lot, this is right at the, the dump site, so.
This, this is a free program. We, we get reimbursed for these things, so we don't charge. We don't even require you to have a permit.
Whenever everybody brings one in, they, they should take them. I know, to take batteries, but they have to take these. Because you're not gonna take them home and save them.
No. Don't break them, especially the ones-
Yeah, I don't see it, oh, it's just-
Mercury. Yeah. That concludes my report.
Okay. All right. Okay, anybody from the public? Is anybody in the public on the Zoom meeting?
Hey, I have one question of the, uh, twenty twenty-two audit.
Yes.
Yes.
Why is that-
We didn't hear the last part of that, Mark.
It's taking so long.
Why is that so delinquent?
My, I could just, we started this, um, back in April of last year. And it's just between, um, the environment of the workplace and limited staff, and, um, I would imagine the audit firms being busy, too.
On our side or their side?
Their side.
Their side, I was gonna say, our, our guys are on it.
Yep.
It feels like we're waiting for high-grade math scores here. It's gonna be, the information's not even gonna be relevant by the time it comes in.
Exactly.
It's, it's been keeping me up for more than I enjoy, Mark, it really has. I, I, I've done everything.
Do you need, do you need a letter from the board to them, or is saying that?
No, no, I, I've, um, it's just that they've been busy. And they're not gonna be doing this service next year.
So, it, it, this is, Mark Brown, this is not just here. We're having a problem with the, um, Marble Valley Transit. We're having a little problem with audits, too, 'cause they're falling behind. Uh, we're having problems with some other organizations, mostly municipalities are, are falling behind. So I think what's happening is the market shrinking on the number of auditors doing the municipality stuff.
That's a fact.
I think that is what's happening. So this is part of that cause. Doesn't mean we, we should let, let up on this. I think we really need to put the hammer down, because it really is gonna hold us up, 'cause we should be in our, we should be in this year from last year, right now.
Problem we face is that-
Yeah, there has to be some contractual accountability.
Absolutely.
This is just ridiculous.
For all these firms?
You look at, at the audit of twenty twenty-three, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
For a lot of these firms, some, you know, a small municipality like this, we're kinda filler material that they kinda, you know, they get to us when they can, they, you know, they've got other bigger fish to fry, so to speak. So as much as we try to push back and, you know, get ourselves, you know, towards the front of the list, it ultimately boils down to when they've got time to do it, and, and, you know, they've been delinquent in getting that, you know, to that, so. That's the position we're in now.
What I'd like to do is refer this matter to the E-Board, 'cause we're gonna be off for two months. So, Mark, you need us to come in and help you. E-Board can pick it up and start dealing with it. So if you need action or something like that, we can, we can do something over the two months where we're not here. What do you think? Everybody okay with that?
I'm hope it's gonna be done soon.
So I need a motion to refer this to the E-Board, so if there's action that needs to be happening in the next two months, Mark can, uh, move on.
Make a motion.
There a motion, do I hear a second? I hear a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Just for the new member, we have an E-Board that deals with the day-to-day stuff with Mark, and that's between the meetings. So we do stuff, and then we come back and report to the full board what's happening. So, so it's an emergency or something, that's why we do that. Okay. I don't hear any public, so we can move on. Any other questions before we move on? I need a motion to go in executive session, but I don't have the motion in front of me. For legal and, but there, and personnel, so we-
Do legal first, come out, do personnel.
Okay. So I need the verbiage.
The code.
Do you have the verbiage on that?
I don't have that. For legal purposes, for, um, attorney correspondence?
Yes, attorney correspondence. And do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor to go in executive session, say aye.
Aye.